Any given time.
Having the appointed time of 5:30, I would like to call Tuesday, July 28, 2020, Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Coram is present.
Thank you, sir. I would accept a motion for approval of the July 14, 2020 committee meeting minutes.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Thank you. Madam Treasurer, any Treasurers report?
I can give one if you want, Chair, but it's not on the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you, sir.
Any questions regarding any OBM contracts, anything like that? Thank you. Before, we do have a presentation. I would like to invite Mr. Doug to the podium. He has an update for us on 33.
Just a quick update here. We're going to recommend moving forward with Repairing Unit 33. We sent basically an email last week. I forwarded everybody with all the information. We're going to recommend basically coming forward. We'll file an emergency ordinance by Friday so we can have it for next Tuesday. We've checked with GE. They have a slot open and doing this will work for them still. So I just kind of want to put everybody, that on the table for everybody. It's, and we would only ask for the amount that's needed to take the rotor out of the generator, ship it to GE, do the inspection and testing, determine what's wrong, and that's our pivot point there, right there. So if it's ends up being GE's issue to fix, we'd just come back to the council with an update, no expenditures for the city. If it's something that they're responsible for moving forward, we would come back with another ordinance and/or recommendations based on that point with the mayor and with the city council, so. Any questions?
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Director. What, do you have any idea what a worst-case scenario would be as far as total cost to the city?
Yeah, yeah. It was probably close to like a little over a million, I think, total, all in. That's worst case. That's complete rewind of the rotor. So I don't think that that's probably the case from what I've been told. It's definitely probably going to be less than that. I think the complete rewind was, just that part was $535,000 was the estimate.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
Well, the way I look at it, if it's not, if it's not the GE's fault, right, then why wouldn't it be covered by our insurance?
Well, I mean, I understand. I kind of look at it the same way from my point of view. We didn't have the ground before the unit came offline and under the trip that occurred. But it would be probably contentious maybe with the insurance company to, you know, show that a hard stop of the generator, of the rotor, would cause that kind of a failure. So there's, it's not a slam dunk, is my point, but we would definitely push for the insurance to cover it. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there is a risk of it not being covered.
And the testing, is that a million dollars or?
No, the shipping and basically the testing, the trick to tell us basically what is exactly wrong and how much it's going to cost to fix it, that is, it's around $284,000 total. We think it'll come in a little bit under that, probably more around $240,000 range, probably. So it would be a cost not to exceed $284,000.
Thank you.
And really, we're kind of in a catch-22 because we have to find out what exactly the problem is, what the catch is, before we could even consider making an insurance claim. So this is almost an absolute necessity, at least to find out what the nature of the problem is, because right now it's really all speculation to what may or may not have caused it.
And the insurance company's expert for their generator is actually an ex-GE employee that used to be a generator expert for GE. He'll be going to the site in Atlanta where the rotor is to actually look at this and confirm, you know, what exactly the issues are along with GE. So we feel like we've got a pretty good hands on it at that point.
Any other discussion? Thank you, sir. Alrighty, and I understand we have a presentation from Scott.
Good evening. I'm going to keep my face covering off if you don't mind, and it's good to see everybody's faces in person. It's been a while. In March of 2019, Sports Facilities Advisory was engaged by the Convention Visitors Bureau to complete a market opportunity report related to the development of new sports tourism assets in Springfield. SFA delivered and presented the report in June of 2019, if you remember. You can find a copy on the city's website. You just need to search market opportunity report and/or SFA report. You can find the copy of that report online. The Bureau's intent was not to identify a certain project or location, rather to validate the sports tourism market and identify the facilities to serve it. Developers have been encouraged to use the market opportunity report for specific projects and move forward to Phase Two on their own accord. As you recall, the Bureau paid for Phase One, the market opportunity report, and then we are not paying for Phase Two or moving forward. We're leaving that up to the developers. Tonight, Evan Elef and Dan Morton with SFA return to give a Phase Two update on behalf of the Legacy Point Sports Complex. This is a status report, more informative. Phase Three, more information will follow. So without further ado, Evan, if you come up. Thank you.
First and foremost, thank you very much, Evan Elef. I am the COO of Sports Facilities Advisory, one of the partners, owners in all of our companies, the sports facilities companies, which I'll explain a little bit more in a moment. We're going to give a high-level and fairly brief update here. Again, it is an update for Phase Two, which is the feasibility work that we've completed for Legacy Point Sports. Before I get into the presentation, I do want to just remind you, we are pre-conceptual development phase. So what you see on the screen is representative of other projects. It is not necessarily representative of this project, but it is intended to show some visuals from other destination facilities similar to what we've analyzed here for Springfield. Next slide, please. Just briefly, Sports Facilities Advisory and Sports Facilities Management, two companies under the same banner. We were founded in 2003, and over the course of that time, we've served more than 2,000 communities across the country and internationally for their endeavors into sports, recreation, wellness, and overall community improvement through sports and recreation assets. We've done this work, again, all over the country, and we have really expanded our services over the last 17 years to include not just feasibility planning, but also operations and execution of the plans that are developed. Next slide, please. We're involved in a number of strategic initiatives and national initiatives related to improving communities through sports and recreation. The health of the community that benefits from the development of facilities and from the implementation of programs is significant. From all of our initiatives, we significantly and truly focus on creating opportunities to improve access for children and families to sports and recreation assets and programs. And although most of what you're going to hear from this point forward will be dedicated to the topic and conversation of creating a destination for sports and sports tourism that drives economic impact, it cannot be understated that a facility like this can serve many, many residents in and around Springfield and create health, economic, and social benefit as well as benefit for businesses and hotels and restaurants and retail establishments throughout the community. Next slide, please. So with that, I mentioned that this is intended to be, the driving force of this project is as a destination driver. Sports tourism is a growing industry. It's been growing for the last decade, and one of the most exciting things, not only for the last decade, but for the foreseeable future, is the fact that sports tourism has proven to be recession-resistant. So through the Great Recession, it is the only segment of the tourism industry that did not decline in a single quarter. And what we're facing right now with the interruption from COVID-19 has obviously changed all of our lives and the facilities that we operate and the facilities that we work with. But as we've reopened over the last, our first facility reopened in Tennessee on May 1st, so over the last few months, we've seen an actual increased demand for tournaments, for programs, people who have been in their house and not been on courts, on fields with their coaches, with their teammates. They are clamoring to get back on the field, on the courts, in their sports and recreation programs. So while we don't know what the economy will suffer or how it will be impacted over the next several years by what we're experiencing right now, we do know that sports and recreation are well-positioned, as they have been for the last decade-plus, to help lead the rebound and lead the recovery from an economy standpoint. Next slide, please. So one of the things that you'll see throughout this, excuse me, and as we go through some examples of facilities that we think have significant relative points, or relevant points, I should say, to the opportunities here in Springfield, you'll see a lot about the SFM Network. Next slide, please. The SFM Network is our network of managed facilities. We full-time manage 21 facilities across the country. We provide management services and advisory services to dozens more. What you should be most aware of is what that really gives us is real-world operational insight and real-time data to make the very best decisions on behalf of our clients and to help inform communities of the real opportunities in front of them as they exist today and as they will for the foreseeable future. Next slide, please. Actually, you can skip this one as well. So I'm just going to quickly run through five facilities that we, as SFA, helped to plan, as SFM currently manage, and some of the key points that, as we've gotten to know your community, we think are important to continue to uncover and develop as potential partnership opportunities. This is the Myrtle Beach Sports Center in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. And although there are a lot of accolades and a lot of great things I can say about this, one of the most important and most relevant points with this is how the sports and recreation asset has partnered with higher education to create professional and educational opportunities with community college and university students. We have a partnership with Ori Georgetown Technical College for their two-year sports tourism program. Every student that goes through that program comes through a practicum and/or an internship with us. And we also have an integrated program with Coastal Carolina University for their four-year sports management students. One of the things that that's been important in terms of demonstrating the power and the opportunity that that brings, well beyond kids who desire to be the next LeBron James or the next Mike Trout, is that 80% of our full-time staff at Myrtle Beach came through those educational programs and we've hired on as full-time staff. Next slide, please. Rocky Top Sports World in Gatlinburg, Tennessee. This complex, actually, in terms of its physical assets, is probably the most comparable to what we've identified as the best opportunity for Springfield, just in terms of physical assets. And while we'll get into those in a moment when I turn the mic over to Dan, I will share with you that also on the educational side, this has a significant partnership with local schools. So the buildings in the middle that you see are actually Gatlinburg-Pittman High School, and we developed this facility on an 80-acre campus, which is inefficient, but it's in the mountains, and there's a full integration between the sports and recreation programs that we offer and the high school. So we actually use the high school football stadium. We use the basketball courts on tournament weekends, and then when we're not running tournaments, the students there have access. They got improved football, practice football, softball, soccer, et cetera, assets that they have access to, and that actually spawned a lot of additional development for other high schools in the county. Next slide, please. The Hoover Met Complex in Hoover, Alabama. One of the most important things that we recognized in starting to work with that community is that, similar to very many other communities, there is a significant income disparity, and it creates differences in access to sports and recreation. So in Hoover, we've implemented what we call the SFM Access Program, which is sponsored by local businesses. So it is a partnership with local businesses to fund low-cost and no-cost access to kids who would otherwise not be able to afford to play. And again, when we think about the impact socially, educationally, from a health and from an economic standpoint of getting kids active, it's an initiative that whether we're involved or whether we're not involved, we strongly recommend that communities consider for all of their sports and recreation assets, get kids active. It makes a difference, not just today for those kids, but in the long-term health of your community. Next slide, please. The Rocky Mount Events Center in Rocky Mount, North Carolina. There are a lot of things that came into play for this facility to be built. It's a downtown redevelopment project. It created new spending and economic development in a downtown that for 40 years had had no investment, and it spawned a lot of extra visitation to that location. Maybe one of the most important things in this facility is the integrated partnership that we've got with a local health clinic, which provides free healthcare services, including over 1,000 mammograms per year to people who otherwise would not have access to that technology and to those types of medical services. And because of that, we were able to tap into federal development incentives worth $7 million for that project. Next slide, please. Finally, I'll wrap up with Cedar Point. You've noticed so far, maybe you've noticed so far, that every one of these says publicly-funded. This one is also, has significant public funding, but this is, of those examples, the one that is privately-owned. Cedar Point Sports Center is at Cedar Point. Cedar Fair Entertainment Company is the parent organization. You may have heard of them, or maybe you've heard of Cedar Point in Sandusky, Ohio, a very well-established destination for tourism and family vacations. They are the roller coaster capital of the world. And despite how well-developed that destination is, they continue to recognize the benefit of sports and sports tourism to recession-proof and to grab additional visitation and create additional spending and tax dollars and visitation to the theme park and the hotels and everything else that has already existed there. And so this is a facility that opened in January. Obviously, this year will look quite a bit different than we expected when we planned it, but this one, before we were open, had pre-booked more than we projected in the first year, as did all of the other facilities that we've shown you so far. And one of the things, as you see the numbers that Dan will present in terms of a high-level overview of this assessment that we've done and set of recommendations, is that we strive to be conservative on the SFA side so that the facility, when it's open, whether it's managed by SFM or whether it's managed by someone else, is set up for success, that we aren't creating expectations that can't be met. And in every one of these facilities, along with every other facility that we've been part of, that we've recommended to move forward to the next phase and continue down the development path, again, we want to set up for success. So that is a key promise that we made to communities, that we made to you during the market opportunity report, and that we have made to our clients now through Phase Two, and will continue, whoever takes on this project, whether we're involved or not, we want to make sure that everything that we are about to share with you in terms of an overview is credible, reliable, and sets this community up for success. Take a look.
Yep.
Next slide, please.
So great to see many of you again. My name is Dan Morton. I'm a Development Advisor with SFA. I'll be sharing a little bit more now, getting into the specifics of our recommendations analysis for Phase Two and for Springfield. So what's on the screen here is just a representation of the development cycle or spectrum that we see for these facilities in really four steps, and the fifth is the SFM Network, but of walking down the path of creating great facilities and access. As Scott shared earlier, we completed our Phase One market opportunity analysis, and within that report, you may be familiar with it, we've recommended assets that we believe could create great outcomes in Springfield from a sports tourism perspective. We think there's a great opportunity here based on a lot of different factors related to geographic location, the region, access to other populations, as well as this destination of why people would come here and why they would travel here, matching that with sports, which we've seen success in a lot of the other projects that Evan talked about, we think is a great opportunity here. And that was in that report. And so as part of that next step in Phase Two, we then completed the feasibility analysis for the Legacy Sports Complex and that development, really to analyze, take those assets we recommended in this market and dive further and do a deep-dive analysis of how will that perform? What's the feasibility of those assets from an operational perspective and then also an economic impact perspective for spending of non-local visitors in this community? And so that's the results that I'm going to share at a high level. I'll remind us of where we are in the process, and so now that we've wrapped up our feasibility analysis that we're going to share, we're now moving in a transitional period of the next steps would be, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, but really going down the path of how this becomes real, right, and how we walk down the path of financing, or I say "we," but whoever takes this on from the development perspective, how it's funded and what those relationships are. So just to reiterate, these things are conceptual at this point, what's on the screen. I'll share the actual numbers of our study, and likely, you know, part of the next step will be creating actual renderings and the development drawings and things like that that actually put this on the site in Springfield specifically. Next slide, please. So I'll share with you again, we've got conceptual things from another project on the screen, but the numbers I'm going to share with you are specific to the results and recommendations for Springfield. And so these are also focused on sports and events assets and nothing else beyond that. And so we've recommended a total construction cost for those facilities at $66 million. I'll share what those assets are, but at the highest level, the combination of assets in terms of playing spaces, indoor and outdoor, and support spaces at about 95 total acres. That operation, again, in order to, with the goal of driving visitation to this community from non-local visitors, we forecasted a total direct spend in this market that would not be here but for activity at the facility of about $25.4 million at maturity, which we consider as year five of operations. There will be a ramp up here, of course, as there was with anything, to get to that projection. Now, just key there, that is new spending directly in the community from non-local visitors who wouldn't be here but for those activities. And along with that, some of the other factors there driving that spend is generation of over 64,000 new room nights to the community on an annual basis, really year-round, as these have a combination of both indoor and outdoor assets within the facility. Specifically to the facility, I'll get into it a little more, but we have, on the indoor side, we have event assets as well as assets that are focused on serving the local community and the gap in recreation and some of the other activities, as well as then outdoor facilities and fields that both drive visitation and create more access to those types of assets. Next slide, please. So just diving a little deeper, again, I mentioned 95 total acres. The indoor facility is recommended to be about 151,000 square feet, and the outdoor playing spaces account for about 46.3 acres. Again, a mix of indoor and outdoor to create the year-round assets, so we're not drawing in hotel rooms and visitors at one time, but would be, you know, throughout the year to diversify in that way. Next slide, please. So from an indoor perspective, the inventory of assets on the court side, so we say courts, these are primarily basketball and volleyball courts, the way we're looking at them now, but they're really multipurpose, flexible assets. And so there's an inventory of eight basketball courts that we can cross-line with eight volleyball courts. It's just over almost 53,000 square feet of flat-floor, open event space, where we're not just running basketball and volleyball, but we can do gymnastics and cheer and dance and martial arts and all kinds of different activities from a sports perspective, but then we can also accommodate other non-sports events as well. Floor coverings is all built into the structure of costs in order to be able to run non-sports events, host meetings and smaller conventions, trade shows, those types of things. So again, creating multipurpose, flexible assets, not single-use spaces. Next slide, please. And you can actually skip that one as well. Thank you. So that was the indoor court inventory, really our primary driver of economic impact or travel or visitation on the indoor side. We also have then assets that are both a need in the community from an opportunity perspective and serve to help the facility in an operation. One of those space being about 32,000 square feet of indoor turf space, really a multipurpose asset where we can run soccer, lacrosse, flag football, multiple activities like that. We've got drop-down cages. We can accommodate baseball, softball training, and really multipurpose space. But on the indoor side, something is lacking this market in a good opportunity. Next slide, please. Along with that, you saw fitness in this, the title of this. Really, it's focused rather than on membership-based fitness, that's not the goal here in this program. It's really focused on training, wellness, and getting better at sports. And so we also have spaces to be efficient within here, but also to focus on creating better athletes, more well-rounded in different disciplines, as well as character development, things like that, within the facility. Next slide, please. Alongside that is some entertainment space. One of the keys here, and I mentioned it a little bit, but where we are in this process, right, we've gone to feasibility and said, what is the market telling us in terms of how this could perform? One of the steps also, and the next steps, is creating relationships and finalizing what this program plan would be. And so these entertainment spaces may change. Again, we've recommended them because it's an opportunity here, but really they have a focus of creating active entertainment spaces through things like climbing, virtual reality, you'll see some of the other things up there, that serve to improve the guest experience when traveling to facilities like this, but also create a diversifying operation for our facility to do things like birthday parties and group events and things when we're not hosting sports tourism events. Next slide, please. So then transitioning to the outdoor side, it can be a little confusing in the way we set it up, but again, harping and hitting this home, we're looking at multi-use, flexible assets. And so on the diamond field side are baseball and softball. We've recommended all synthetic turf. These can be, that increases your playability. You don't have to rest fields. It reduces your operating costs. And so we can accommodate a lot of different types of play and versions of play for both baseball and softball and then other activities on these fields. So in total, we have eight diamond fields. There's two different sizes of those. We have full-size fields where we can use them for smaller fences and base paths. We can use the outfield for multipurpose activities like soccer and lacrosse, but it gives us a four-set of larger fields. Then we have four smaller fields at 300 foot. Again, we can adjust those base paths and fence distances to accommodate a lot of different activities, to give us a total of eight inventory, but we can use it in a very flexible way to accommodate different versions of play when we're hosting events as well as local use. Next slide, please. Then on the multipurpose field or long field, really focused on soccer, lacrosse, football, field hockey, rugby, and some other activities, we have another bank of eight total fields. Now this, we've recommended half-synthetic and half-natural grass, based on, you know, the events and the desire for what people would need in this market when they come to visit. But these fields are oversized, if you will, in terms of their total space at about 95,000 square feet. The purpose of that is so we can accommodate all kinds of sports, right? We can do soccer, football, lacrosse on the same field without having to change or, you know, build dedicated fields. And then we also have the ability to chop those up and run smaller-sided when we're doing events. So there's eight standalone fields there for multipurpose, but if you recall from the baseball, softball side, we can accommodate eight more multipurpose fields. So it actually gives us a total inventory of 16 when we're running our biggest events for things like soccer and lacrosse and football, but we don't have to build those out separately. And so that allows us to be efficient. Our forecast takes that into account. We're not overbooking the facility. We know that we have weekends that we have to dedicate to certain types of disciplines, but we're not building for the largest event that we can host. So really, again, multipurpose, flexible assets. Next slide, please. So just in summary, right, to tie us from Phase One to Phase Two and to where we are today, again, we think this is a very unique opportunity in the fact that there's a great destination that we believe people will travel to. There's a need for both local and regional sports assets. And so combining that with what is here, we think there's a great opportunity to develop a facility that will hit the numbers that we've projected, as Evan mentioned, they're conservative based on how we look at things. In addition to that, in having another anchor within the site with world-class retail and destinations there, you've got a site that people travel to already, that we, you know, could add, or assets could be added to, that's creating more reasons to go there and more reasons to participate and spend there. I'll wrap up. Evan is going to share a little bit more about the funding strategy and as well as next steps. Thank you. Nice dance. Next slide, please. So just in wrapping up, I think we had a conversion issue here, but the funding insights, because what we've talked about so far is bridging the gap between Phase One, the market opportunity report, and Phase Two, what we've recently completed in terms of operational feasibility.
of operational feasibility. Phase Three is about funding, getting the partnerships in place, getting the funding in place. Something that you, if you have reviewed or were part of the presentation for the Market Opportunity Report, you have heard before and/or read before, that still rings true, is that a facility like this has to have some level of significant public-private partnership with significant support from the public sector. Every one of those five examples and literally 100% of the sports tourism examples that we've been a part of have a significant component of public support. Public support comes in many different functions and many different ways, but as the next steps in this process are taken, I encourage you to keep in mind that some level of public support and subsidy that helps to get the facility built and keep the facility operational so that this community can benefit from the local impact on your residents who want to step on the field and the impact on your community from people or two people who may never step on the field, but benefit from an influx of visitation and spending and from the brand that will be further enhanced and from the extra hotel rooms that will help to reach your goal and your threshold for number of hotel rooms per year so that you are ready for that economic development phase that encourages more businesses to be developed and get more revenue for the city and more visitation and again, create that local impact for anyone who lives here and will benefit from a facility and the impacts of a facility on the social, educational, health and economic side. That will require activity and activation from you, from the public sector to support this project. So we don't want to skim over that important detail that will be part of the next conversations. What you choose to do with that, obviously, will be, you know, immediately down the path of the conversations as, you know, the Legacy Point team looks to develop a developer's agreement and start to make real progress towards funding this project. And so again, that is a, a long-winded way of saying, this project, like every sports tourism project, frankly, like almost every, 85% of the total sports and recreation projects in our portfolio, will require support from you. And so that will be the next step, whether we're involved in, in that or not, just want to set that expectation for you, that those conversations are coming and should come for the benefit of this project and this community. Next slide, please, which is just to say thank you for your time. Very much appreciated. I know if you've got some questions, I think we've got some time, happy to answer any. But again, want to thank you for your time and, and attention to this update that we've given you.
Any discussion? Autumn and Hanauer.
Well, thank you. I do know that travel sports is, is, is big. I know many of us have had kids that have done it and we know families that have, that do it every weekend. So, but, so, how, so you guys are still developing the plan on this $66 million project? So, so you're coming back to us wanting, I assume, some tax money or something, right? And, and set a public-private partnership, can you elaborate on that a little bit more? Who owns it? Who, you know, how's this, how, what's the, it might be too early for that, but you know, just what's the, who's, who's, what partnership is what, I guess, is my ask.
Yeah, all of those details are to be determined. The reason that we show you other projects and other examples is to set the groundwork for how it's worked in other communities. The concept right now is obviously for this to be a Legacy Point-owned and operated facility. The way that we see public, the public sector participating is through things like special taxing districts and through even partnerships with parks and recreation and through other components with schools, et cetera, that come in to create a holistic opportunity to serve the community. And so how all of those pieces come together will change what's in the plan right now. Give you a very easy example, you saw bright and colorful family entertainment center components. Would the best thing for this entire development, not the sports complex, but for Legacy Point, to be to have a small family entertainment center in the facility? Or would it be to have, I'm just throwing this out, this has not been a conversation, so don't hold me to this, Dave and Buster's here in the market, right? What would be the best thing for the opportunity overall? All of it comes together in a master development. Right now, you've got a great anchor in Shields, but Shields independently isn't creating a tremendous amount of visitation that creates economic development on-site. This facility would. It's an anchor and it is typically a loss leader for all of the other pieces. So how, sorry, this is getting a little long-winded, but how that impacts what's been done so far and what the specific ask and gap to cover will be, whether that involves schools, whether that involves higher, higher education institutions, medical sector, you, private sector, Shields itself, et cetera, all of that is part of the next step where it really refines the project. And that's one of the reasons we can't show you a rendering, because all of those relationships that need to be formalized and then walked down the path of commitment need to come into play in order to make this the very best project for Springfield.
Autumn, this ends up.
Thank you. But you are having those conversations with the park district and the school district and everyone else you just mentioned.
There have been preliminary conversations, those need to be formalized and, you know, walk down the path. That is an immediate next step that the Legacy Point team is prepared to have.
Autumn, woman currently.
Thank you. So you've mentioned education and higher education. Do you have any facilities that are used as a dual purpose for, for, like, like a high school, middle school, high school and a university?
Yeah, absolutely. So although in Gatlinburg, there's not a university, we have a partnership with University of Tennessee, and of course, as I mentioned, that's the facility that's on the high school campus. Realistically, we are heading into the fall season and we've got facilities that are going to be the site for dual-working parents or dual-working families or single-parent households where kids will come and they will have their virtual education onsite at our sports complexes and then transition into after-school. This has changed the game in terms of what these facilities can be. The most important thing for a facility like this is to recognize that it is a community asset, regardless of who the owner is. It creates opportunities so that higher education, school-aged children, preschools, et cetera, everyone's going to need to find a way to, you know, make it through whatever the impacts will be on a state level, local level, school board level. So I would expect that to be even more expanded in the next 30 days than it has been in the last 30 years.
And that's, that was actually sort of my next question was, what sort of uses are you seeing or you anticipating moving forward? Because obviously there are a lot of questions around contact sports and just sports in general right now. So you're seeing, some of your facilities are being used for educational purposes?
Absolutely. We've got summer camps right now, and those summer camps are going to transition into, for lack of a better term, school camps for, for families that need it. And we're going to bring in, you know, we've got the bandwidth, we've got the spaces, we've got classrooms, we've got a lot of area in a lot of these facilities to keep social distancing and groups down to 10 and bring in some educators that will be teachers that are displaced and lose their job because of all of the virtual learning that's going to happen. This provides in a lot of our facilities, we have laid the groundwork right now. Now, when this gets built, if that's still an issue, is that's, if that's still part of our new normal, who knows? But the flexibility of this space, because it's not just sports and recreation, it's inventory of time and space. And I mentioned before, high bay, well-lit, flat-floor space, it's not just basketball and volleyball, it's not just sports, there are events, et cetera. All of these things need to be considered. This, we strongly recommend you consider anything that you support to be an essential building for your community, whether that means storm, whether that means emergency care, whether that means education. Uncover all of those opportunities, it just creates the best, the best outcome for your community.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? All right. All righty. Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clark, could you please read those ordinances?
Will do. 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-134, 2020-153, 2020-181, 2020-195, 2020-207, 2022-73.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances? All righty, thank you. Now we have ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clark, could you please read those for CWLP?
2020-278, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of $500,000 under contract number UE20-06-38 by product hauling for the Dolman Power Plant with Rex D. Evans, AKA Evans Carthage, for a total amount payable not to exceed $1 million for the electric division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2020-279, an ordinance accepting proposal number UE21-02 with Altech Industries Incorporated for the electric and TD Division leasing of trucks in an amount not to exceed $1,373,624 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move, consent.
All in favor?
Aye.
No nays, eyes have it.
2020-280, an ordinance authorizing technical support and maintenance for P1 historian software for the Dolman Power Plant Electric Generation Department from Ozzy Soft LLC in an amount not to exceed $60,300 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move, consent.
Second?
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
No nays, eyes have it.
2020-281, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chemicals for mercury oxidation, capture and remove in a Dolman plant from Nalco Company LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,534,698 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move, consent.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no nays, eyes have it.
Public Works, 2020-282, an ordinance accepting RFP PW21-05 with Rayhan Brothers, doing business as Sangamo Construction Company and Perry-Broughton Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for street and alley repairs for the amount not to exceed $600,000 for the Office of Public Utilities and Public Works.
Move, consent.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays, eyes have it.
General City Business, 2020-285, an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease agreement with Springfield, Illinois African American History Foundation, doing business as Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum for a property located at 1440 Monument Avenue.
Motion, consent.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
2020-286, an ordinance approving the appointment of Emmett Hale to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission.
Move to debate.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no nays, eyes have it.
2020-287, an ordinance approving the appointment of John S. Smith to the City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission.
Move to debate.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, eyes have it.
2020-288, an ordinance approving the appointment of Linda Dickerson to the Spring, City of Springfield Retired Employees Advisory Commission.
To debate.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, eyes have it.
2020-289, an ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with Downtown Springfield Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $1 million to provide services from March 1st, 2020 through February 28th, 2022.
$100,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, $100,000, correction. I like round numbers.
Autumn and, uh...
Yeah, I think we're going to hold this in committee for the time being.
I would second that for you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have it.
2020-290, an ordinance approving an amendment to the rules of procedure for the City Council.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
2020-291, anti-racism, anti-violence and anti-hatred resolution.
Second? Any discussion? Autumn and Turner.
About two weeks ago, we had a similar ordinance before regarding the ten principles of policing. And at that time, I said repeatedly that I supported the principles. However, I thought to put those principles into practice, we needed more substantive action. That's not me, I'm not doing anything.
You're throwing your voice there.
Yeah. So with the anti-racism, anti-violence and anti-hatred resolution, I believe that we find ourselves in the exact same situation. I applaud the mayor for bringing the resolution, but I think we have, what we have is a ceremonial approach to a situation that calls for bold structural change. I think the resolution says all the right things, things with which no one can disagree, but it does not change Springfield's approach to eradicating racism, violence or hatred that exists throughout our community. So I know that you all have heard me say that Autumn and Gregory and I were going to bring ordinances that would begin to address systemic racism in Springfield, and I think that this resolution is a great vehicle for those proposals. So I had an amendment that I shared with, I think, everybody here. I have one for the clerk, one for the mayor. And I apologize for getting it to you so late, but I've been kind of thinking about it and pondering over it for the last couple of weeks. So for those of you that haven't had an opportunity to look at it, I'm happy to answer any questions or if you would rather walk through it, that's fine too, however you want to approach it.
Any discussion or anybody who has reviewed it?
If anyone amended tonight.
So I'd make a motion for amendment number one.
Second?
Discussion on amendment number one? Mr. Clark, could you read amendment number one, please?
Okay, amendment number one, is that where you have section two?
Yes.
Okay. Section two, "That being a government by the people, that the mayor and the city council will continue to engage and listen to the public through means like ward planning sessions and collaboration with community groups such as Black Lives Matter, Education in Action Together and Root History, whereby our progress can be measured through agreed-upon actionable steps."
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No opposed, eyes have it.
So then you want to go through each one of them?
Yes, if, if, if we can.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Section three, "That being a government for the people, our municipal government will continue to require cultural competence and anti-racism training for all city staff, commissioners and contractors. Anti-racism training will clearly define racism, the types of racism and how individuals and systems of government can and should not demonstrate racism on behalf of the City of Springfield. There will also be a review and revision of all city policies to ensure equality and departments will continually review and improve operations to ensure equality in the distribution of services and equitable treatment to employees and residents."
And then section four and five, that, section two and three are hybrid with the main section there with an addition. Okay, sections four and five are additions.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Section four, "Cultural competency and anti-racism, appropriate objectives to be incorporated into all staff evaluations."
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Section five, "The Department of Human Resources will prepare adoption expectations and penalties recording acts of racism in the workplace."
Any discussion on this, on this amendment? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then section six is really section four with just one, the only change is black is capitalized.
Section six, "The City of Springfield recognizes May 31st as BLM Solidarity Day, marking the day where thousands of cars processed, proceed, processed through downtown and thousands more march peacefully through the streets to advance the awareness and movement of social and economic change to black lives and...
Section seven, "The City of Springfield, the home of Abraham Lincoln, takes a strong position in support of civil rights and opposition to racism and discrimination of all kinds, and call upon the citizens to denounce personal social media attacks, denounce destructive criticism, support constructive criticism, and support investment that will result in equal opportunities throughout our community."
And then, section eight, nine, and 10 are new, and section 11 is just section six, renumbered.
Section eight, "In support of civil rights and the opposition of racism, as noted in section seven, Springfield will proactively invest in wards two and three through businesses, infrastructure, and housing development." Section nine, "The City of Springfield will develop strategies and practices that combat occurrences of poverty that will have resulted from a denial of civil rights, disinvestment in minority communities, and racism." Section 10, "The City of Springfield will review and revise procurement guidelines to ensure the minority businesses' goals have minimum requirements and that TIF funds, funded contractors demonstrate that they will seek to provide employment opportunities to minority subcontractors."
And then, section 11 is section six with no changes.
Section 11, "That this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and recording by the city clerk."
Alright, anybody have any discussion on any of those? Any questions? Alderman, hand hour, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I mean, um, the, uh, just a question, um, it just kinda struck me, but will some of these have to be bargained because we're putting it in evaluations and things? Will, will that be a requirement? Will it, I, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know?
Well, I would, I would think that, I would defer to Corporation Council, but I would think that evaluations are required of all employees.
Right, but I, it, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, that, and it's a valid question.
Do you want me to, I'm sorry, just very quickly, there are several items. The, the resolution is, uh, is, uh, I would assume meant to be guidance, so there's gonna be follow-up action on a whole variety of areas. So, several things that affect employees will absolutely be subject to bargaining. However, that being said, I think the various collective bargaining associations, unions, I think certainly understand the importance of the goals and resolutions purposes. Therefore, I think these are things that probably will be things that can be worked through. But they, anything to do with employee terms and conditions, you know, of employment would be subject to being included in the labor agreement. That would involve things such as evaluations, uh, you, I think there was a mention of standard for discipline. All of those items would be ones that would definitely fall within that category. However, those are also proper public policy goals.
Thanks.
Alderwoman, descend, then Conley.
Um, I can, thank you, Chair. I can tell you that in other units of government and other sectors of government, they are taking these same considerations.
I just was asking.
Yeah, I mean.
No, it's a, it's a valid question.
Yeah, no, and as things go on, they will incorporate those going forward. It's not, I mean, we can't snap our fingers when these changes happen overnight, and no one expects that. I think everyone just wants it on their radar and on the record, that this is the direction we're moving in, and this is the direction we need to move in. Um, I know at the agency I work at full-time, we are in these anti-racism sessions for our senior staff for the next couple of weeks to discuss exactly what that means, because a lot of people don't know what the differences between non-racism and anti-racism. So, um, it's a learning curve for a lot of people, and that's, we're just trying to make sure everyone is on the same page.
Alderwoman, Conley, then Hand Hour.
Alderwoman Turner, um, so you, you mentioned the, um, the training in, in section three. I was just wondering, do you have an expectation, would this be an annual training or training upon hire, or do you wanna leave that a little more open?
Yeah, I think we can leave it a little more open to fit into the context that, um, because there is training currently ongoing, so I think it can fit into the context of the ongoing training.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Hand Hour, then Proctor.
Yeah, and one, one other point, and I, I brought this up to you earlier, um, Alderwoman Turner, is that on, on section eight, we, we have, I, I guess this kinda just reiterates the fact, we have put, put more money towards the, uh, the two wards through marijuana money. Um, you, we got the, I think the TIP was extended as well, things like that, so, so we are, you know, we are doing section eight already, um, so.
And I, I agree, and, um, but I think that all of us are not gonna be here always, so I think that this kinda leaves a, a legacy for, um, you know, the councils that will come after us, that it still needs to be a focus.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just, Alderman, Alderman, Proctor, I'm sorry, man.
Two things that kinda like, uh, piggyback on Alderwoman Conley's, uh, question about the training, when the, when the training concludes, could we put in here that the staff has to sign some sort of certificate or something saying that they went through this training? Because the point I made last week, or it was weeks before, was when you sign something, it seems like it'd take more ownership to it, and you're, you know, you're gonna adhere to it, and it creates a bond. And then, the, the second part too, um, when we say City of Springfield, who do, who do we mean in the, in the city that, to kinda lead the charge on that? Is it gonna be like the mayor's office, or HR, or?
I think that, from my understanding, it would be the mayor's office, because we're talking about the entire, uh, because we're talking about the entire city workforce, and, and so I think that that would be the mayor.
Okay. So, should we specify, you know, a committee or something in the, in this resolution, so it's kinda, so that group takes ownership of it too, moving forward, or?
I think, for me, I think that it should rest with the mayor, because if you, I, I don't think it's something that we, that we want to, uh, give over to a committee to oversee or to, um, track or to, you know, validate that it's actually happening. I think that it becomes, if it becomes the mayor's responsibility, then the, the mayor, not necessarily, I'm just saying, the mayor. The mayor is, um, then, that's the person that's held accountable.
Is there anyone else? Just briefly, I just wanna speak on, uh, thank you, Alderwoman Turner, for, for writing all of this up. I'm, I'm in total agreement when I reviewed it. Um, I, I, it, it puts some teeth in, in, in it, and some, some, some measurable things that we can, that we'll be able to look, look back on, you know, in some years and, and, and see how we're doing. Um, I'm particularly, um, very, very interested in our, our contracting and, and making sure that we get, um, as many minority contractors or subcontractors working and making sure that, that people we're contracting with is fulfilling their obligation with that. Um, and as far as, you know, number eight with, with, you know, wards two and three, we have done some things with, with cannabis money and things like that. We also, you know, gave half of that cannabis money to our, our, our police and fire pension, and Alderman McMinim is still working on a plan to get him more money. So, you know, with, with Ward Two particularly, I'm, I'm gonna keep working on more plans to get us more money, because, you know, we're, we're, we're behind, so that's, that's a nice chunk, and, you know, that's gonna help set up, uh, that, that community for years to come. Um, but we still need more. Um, we still got a lot of, lot of, lot of work to do, and, you know, um, you know, in, in my particular ward, we haven't had significant change or significant buildings or, or, you know, things, things that, that we need, and, you know, it's gonna take a lot more than this, that, that little bit of cannabis money that we've done, so, uh, we gotta keep hammering at it, so I appreciate it, bye.
Mr. Clerk, if I can, add a clarification, have we voted on all of the changes already?
We, we have not voted on the last, uh, the last three.
Motion to adopt the last three.
Second?
Any discussion on those anymore? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the ayes have it. Um, also, Mr., um, co-sponsors, are we taking any co-sponsors right now? Okay. I would, uh, like to be added, anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah.
Alderwoman, descend, though, Proctor, anybody else? Donald, Hand Hour, anybody, anybody? Conley. Everybody but it looks like, Alderman McMinim?
Yep.
You in?
Noted.
I was never received a copy of the amendments, so I'd like to study the amendments.
Okay, certainly. I just wanted, I didn't wanna leave you out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, never mind then, 'cause I was gonna say if we could, my motion for debate was to attach the amendment, and since we have all these co-sponsors on the amendment, I was gonna withdraw my motion for debate and move it to consent.
Second? Second?
Any discussion on the, uh, motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, ayes have it.
2020-293, I'm sorry, 2020-292, "An ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative collecting bargaining agreement extension with the United Association of Journeyman and Apprentices of the Plumbing and Pipe Fitting Industry of USA and Canada, Local Union Number 137."
Move to consent.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2020-293, "An ordinance authorizing execution of a tentative collecting bargaining agreement extension with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chauffeurs, Warehousingmen, and Helpers of America, Local 916."
Move to consent.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes, Alderman McMinim.
Just real briefly, I thought it was, uh, a very appropriate provision to provide for one-year contracts, and I commend the unions that worked on that with our negotiating team. We don't know what the situation will be a year from now, and, uh, Mayor, I think that was the right approach, so, commendation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any proposed? Proposed, ayes have it. Uh, any unfinished, unfinished business? Alderwoman, descend.
This is Director Bottom. I saw him here earlier, did he walk out? Was on the phone? Okay. Oh, there he is.
[inaudible].
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say what I have to say. One, I'm gonna harp on it again, speeding is out of control in this city, so that actually goes with the chief. It's just, the complaints I get about speeding are insane, and we have some drag races going on, it seems like, on the daily, and it's just, it's, it's very dangerous, and I wish everyone would just slow down. I know some personal responsibility is involved in this, but, um, you know, there are some people, I'm looking around the room, there's some people here who live on busy streets, and they can attest to the fact that speeding is obviously a problem. Um, second, I'm all for progress, and the rail improvement project is going to kill me, literally. And Andrew, I, um, I'm sorry, it's coming your way, because I am at the point where I'm getting 50 to 60 calls a day. Um, I have a full-time job, I'm a single mom, and I cannot take 50 to 60 calls a day about one single project. It's very, very difficult to navigate, because it's, this project is underway, it's going, um, and, you know, it is, it is totally decimated neighborhoods, um, where streets used to be, or neighbors used to be, there are no longer houses. Um, you can take a drive down Fifth or Sixth Street and see for yourself what's going on. Um, you know, yes, there's always been tracks there, but there weren't four tracks there, so, um, you know, foundations are cracking, and, I mean, it is insanity what these people are dealing with. And, you know, had we known this was coming, we should've bought up all the houses, because expecting people to live in the environments that they're living in, and the conditions they're living in, in these neighborhoods, is not okay. And I'm just gonna say it here and say it now, and I've said it before, but it's getting worse by the day, and one single person cannot handle the volume of calls regarding the rail improvement project. And, you know, they get passed around from Hanson to us, to Senator Durbin's office, um, and, you know, no one can get any answers, and no one can get any resolution. And it's a mess. That's all I'm gonna say.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
I would.
If it, Alderman, I have a different topic, so, Alderwoman, if it's.
Yeah, I, I just wanna go back to the speeding. You're absolutely right. I've, I've gotten probably 10 calls from people of, about speeding in the neighborhoods, and even on my side street, it's totally out of control. We had one of the, I don't know what they're called, that monitored speed.
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
And, I mean, I, I sat on my back porch, and I could see people coming at like 57, because it, for those of you who know where I live, it starts monitoring the speed when you turn at Cook Street, and you'd have like 57 people coming down Wheeler at 57 miles per hour, and it's extremely dangerous. Then you do have people drag racing. I've, I've sat on my back porch and seen people drag racing down, so it is a problem, and it becomes even more dangerous, because at least Wheeler is a, you know, it's a two-lane, it's wide. But the other problem, and I did speak with the, uh, neighborhood police officer about, is on Livingston, on the other, on the north side of, of Cook Street, where it's extremely narrow, and it's a lot of trees and foliage, and it's in and out of city, county, and you have the same problem there. And it is, it's extremely dangerous, and it is a significant problem throughout the entire city. It slowed down, and then the machine went away, and it started back up again.
Everyone's home.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman McDonald, yes, sir.
To build upon that, the machine went from your street to Durkin Drive, because I made that request.
Oh, okay.
And it's, although we don't get up to, that I, I've seen to 50 some, but it's, it's at least 10 to 15 miles over, so, you're right, it is a problem all over the city, and I'd appreciate any efforts, and first of all, I appreciate the speed trailer, that does at least help for a bit, and gives people an awareness, but we need all the help we can get. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight is, uh, I've been a patient alderman the last few months. Uh, an issue was brought forward to me a few months ago in my ward. You all probably know, at the corner of, uh, Brunz and, and Jefferson, there's an apartment complex called Old Town Apartments. A lot of you have probably seen that at one time, the apartments, I think there was an accident, and, and it messed up some of the siding and bricks of, of the units, and, and if you're coming from the west, or, excuse me, if you're coming from the east going west, you can see that some of the siding's off, but, uh, I went back in there and actually went in a unit, and, a unit, actually more than one unit, and, uh, took a look at it a few months ago, and it is appalling, the condition of this apartment complex. And I wanna say, I wanna thank profusely Darrell Harris and his staff and his team for how many times they've gone out there, and the citations that have been issued, and, and the, and initiating the process that we are going through as a city. And, uh, Mayor, you and I were briefed by Mr. Harris months ago, and, and I appreciate your involvement, uh, you've taken an interest in this, and, and, but, I am, I'm discouraged because here we are, months later, and any of you drive by there, it's, it's appalling. Uh, there are holes in the si, there's holes in the, holes in the siding, uh, some of the apartment units, although unoccupied, in a building, there were other units in the same building that were occupied, had mold, dripping water from the, from the ceiling through this apartment complex. Holes in the floor, it was large enough for, you know, 10 people to go through, just siding's torn off, squirrels have done damage. It, it is appalling. And I learned recently that, and I'm probably gonna say this wrong, but through our process, we have certain steps. There was an owner, it's in foreclosure, and I understand now there's a new owner. The new owner has been provided, uh, an extension to remedy the problems that have been brought forward, uh, and it's been, uh, been given until, I understand, till October 14th, and I would just like to work with you, Corporation Council, on doing anything and everything we can to put the hammer down and make sure these problems get resolved as fast as possible. Not only are people living in these buildings, uh, and, and I, I believe, and I'm not the expert, but I, the health expert, but I believe they shouldn't be, um, but I, I, it is appalling that the, what it's doing to residential, uh, and, and commercial real estate values, and it's just quite frankly something that we shouldn't have to put up with in our city. So, Corporation Council, if I, you know, if I could work with you on making sure that we're, if we can speed up the process, uh, we gotta draw the line somewhere. Just because we have a new owner now, uh, uh, at least that's accurate. we gotta draw the line somewhere. Just because we have a new owner now, at least that's accurate, we gotta put a stop to it and get them to remedy the problems. And again, I thank Mr. Harris for all your help, you've been wonderful in the process, but this is one of those things where our process might have a little flaw to it.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman McMidlin.
Donald, thank you for bringing up the Old Town Apartments, because I believe the owner there was the same owner at Westbrook Apartments in Ward Seven, on Seven Pines Road. And you've mentioned a change of ownership. We had similar conditions starting to occur in Westbrook Apartments at the north east corner of Seven Pines and Chatham Road. So, Mr. Harris, could you check on the ownership of Westbrook Apartments and see if we have a similar owner or possibly the same owner as what we had at Old Town Apartments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would there be anyone else? Any new business?
I got a, there's a, there was an issue today at the library. I got a couple of calls from staff, that I guess that there was a very belligerent individual that came into the library and started using profanity and some racial epithets, and just really bad. They called security, he even got very belligerent with security, and security finally got him, I guess, outside. They called nine-one-one, and no one ever came. They called the, called again. I guess they called the police two or three times. No one ever came, and then finally, they were outside and saw a patrol car going by and kind of flagged him down, and then that person stopped and took care of the situation. But I know that we're using the library as a cooling center, and I know it's where we have a lot of, where we're driving homeless there. And that's, and that's fine, if that's the plan, but we really have to take into consideration the employees that are in that building and go in there every day. And it's almost like sometimes they're put in the middle of a war zone. This is the most egregious situation that has occurred, that I've been made aware of, but I get calls all the time about, you know, people coming in, and this is not to bash any, any of that. I'm just saying that we have to have a plan, that we take care of our employees and not put them in dangerous situations. So, I guess that situation kind of resolved itself without any, you know, harm being done to anyone, but there's definitely a potential for danger, so we just.
Mayor Langford?
Thank you. I'd ask the chief come up, because, you know, there should be a protocol, what the security guard should do. They shouldn't call nine-one-one, they should have a direct line to, if it's a homeless person, to be the officer.
No, it wasn't the security guard that called, it was the employee. I guess she was just really scared and didn't know what to do.
Still, it should be the police, but in regards to the cooling center, actually, the Warden Warming Center will, is actually the facility being used, but the library is a public space, so, you know, any individual can go in there and use the facility, but as you pointed out, anybody that's not obeying the rules would be ushered out, but they should have a direct access to the police, you know, instead of going through nine-one-one. So, if you'd, I guess, enlighten us on what that process should be, that'd be helpful, and then we'll have to inform the library staff, what's the most expeditious way to address that type of situation.
Actually, nine-one-one would be the quickest way, if there wasn't a emergency situation.
So. Well, thanks, chief. I learned something new. Learned something new every day.
I mean, with that said, you know, there's a priority calling, depending on how it was called in. You know, if they said somebody's over there just yelling and screaming, it may be a lower priority, depending on what was going on at that time, you know, so. Our guys have been extremely busy, even though people are at home, and not as many people working, our calls for service are still up, and so, you know, and as everybody, as everybody knows, we're running right now, we have an authorized strength of two hundred and fifty people, I have a hundred and ninety-eight people on my department that can work right now. I have over fifty-two people who don't count a Manny, who are off in the military, who are off sick, injured, worker comp. I have ten that are in training that don't count, and I have seventeen openings right now that I'm sitting on. So, as part of this whole COVID, and we're trying to make up this budget shortfall, we're reducing officers, and that's gonna continue throughout the year, and it's gonna be an even bigger problem next year as we go through. You know, I anticipate having over twenty-two openings by October first. The mayor's been gracious, at least let us get four, but they won't be any good for eleven months. They'll start the academy in September, so basically I'll be floating on about eighteen. I anticipate another four to five or six the first quarter of next year. So, we're gonna sit around twenty-five low come next May, and it's gonna take a year to get those twenty-five back, and I count everybody that's gonna retire next year. So, there's gonna be a time, we're down probably forty to forty-five officers, not counting people who are off on light duty, injured status from military. Like I said, I have three in the military gone for at least a year, one's gone for three years, I have two that are gone for four months, and then you just throw your workers comp, your light duty, and everything else that's on it. We're running for call-to-call, we're gonna be there, this is our busiest time of year. Depending on how they called it in, it could be an extended ETA.
And I really wasn't trying to.
No, I understand.
No, no, I wasn't trying to, like, you know, ding the police or anything.
I did not take it that way.
But I just, I just think that everybody needs to be aware that, you know, there are dangerous situations over there, and we need to do whatever we can to protect our employees.
If you call, and you didn't get an initial response, call back and say that the subject's escalating, and say what they're doing.
Okay.
That way they can change the priority on it. So, if it just comes in as what we call a removed subject, and they call and say, hey, there's a homeless guy here, or there's a customer here, or whoever who's just yelling and cursing, is he hitting, is he throwing anything? No, no, okay, we'll get an officer there. Well, that's one priority, but now if he's starting to escalate, well, now I'm fearful that he's gonna start hitting people, that escalates it. And then maybe they clear a guy off of a call, or a girl off of a call, and then they leave whatever maybe burglary they're on, or whatever, and they leave that, and they go take care of that, and then they go back to burglar when they're done. So, the thing I would stress to the employees over there, and I'll call the director, is that if it's starting to escalate, call back and say it is escalating. And, you know, we're fearful now that this may turn into a different situation, and we'll get somebody over there.
Okay, that'd be great if you could talk to the director, and, you know, then they could do some kind of mini-meeting with employees or something.
And the other thing we could do is we could actually provide their security some training, because I know they've got some new people over there, and I don't know what they get trained on over there, to be honest with you.
Probably both of those things would be really great, thank you.
Maybe we could get them to some CIT training, because a lot of those people, you know, suffer from addiction or mental illness, and maybe that would be helpful.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman DeSenzel.
Again, sorry.
It's the mask.
I was getting some complaints over the weekend from someone that doesn't live in my ward, but she is a friend, and she has property where there was a large block party going on. And this was a block party that was permitted by the city. So, they went to Public Works, they got the signatures, they did a regular block party. My block does this every summer, we're not doing it this summer. Driveways were blocked, it got out of control very quickly, and I think that as a city, we need to take a stand on, are we going to allow these regular block parties that we, that we used to allow when we're in phase four, and we're supposed to be staying fifty people or under? So, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration, because this was a, you know, the city provided barricades, and it was a, a city sanctioned block party, but from what I heard, there were two hundred people there.
There was, there was another, a situation in Three, and there are two people here that want to talk about it. That happened on Saturday night, and it was.
This wasn't in Three?
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't have stood it, but there were two of them. And, and this was the same kind of situation. I don't think it was as many people as we normally have, but it was very disruptive, and I know that I was texting or messaging with the Franklin's as it was going on, and also talked to the police, and they went out and, you know, had cars removed and that kind of thing. So, it didn't, this situation was very disruptive, don't get me wrong, but unfortunately, it didn't rise to the level of what we had seen, you know, at Comer Cox and some other places.
Right.
But I think you're absolutely right. The problem is, we use, we use this whole, you know, block party permit for all kinds of different things. And maybe there, and I know that Public Works is, is working on that. I had a long conversation with Director Bottoms, I also talked to Deputy Director Harris, and I know that they are working on how to deal with, you know, that permitting. Because, and, and part of it is understanding what the permit is for. Because if someone just says, you know, I'm having a block party, and then, you know, you're supposed to have the music off at ten, supposed to be no alcohol, you know, on the streets and that kind of thing, and so people get the permit, but then they don't follow, they don't follow any of the rules. So, you know, it just, I think they are doing the right process by looking at and trying to reorganize that, that whole permitting process. And then, this, this permit was issued from twelve to twelve, and why you would, why you would sign off on a permit from twelve to twelve, I have no idea, especially when music is supposed to be off at ten.
A lot of partying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Director Bottom can come up and explain it, but I think there's two resolutions. One is, we either just stop it during the pandemic, saying no more, or we can just, you know, get with the alderman of the respective board requesting the block party. Of course, they'd have to keep their social, not the social distance, but it should be tied to tables, where you just don't have people wandering the streets. So, they'd have, you know, the plastic table set up, because there might be neighborhood associations that want to do something respectably. So, that's the two directions we're thinking about going. So, Director Bottom, I don't know if you wanna add anything on the process, or?
Yeah, well, whenever we get the call, we discourage them anyway, just due to the current COVID situation. We did, we are updating our permit at this time, we just created a new permit in City Works, Nitred, basically July twenty-fifth, from twelve PM to July twenty-fifth, twelve PM, so it's actually no time. But, but we've, we've taken off the twelve PM out of it, and they need to obviously follow the guidelines for the block party, and then they're also responsible for filling out a block party event notification form. We further expanded upon that during COVID, and had them sign off that they will follow the COVID requirements and restrictions, that the state, the state and local requirements, the state and local requirements we have at this time. Unfortunately, that did not happen at this party. You're correct, music's supposed to be off at ten, it's supposed to follow all the, all the noise regulations, and then everybody's supposed to be out the street by eleven, eleven PM. And they're supposed to have insurance, and there should be no alcohol unless they got the proper liquor license.
Yeah, I mean, and I know that you can't have a permit for every single thing, but that's one of the problems, is that it's just one permit, so, like now during COVID, churches are having, you know, outside services on Sunday mornings, and if they, if they have small parking lots and they wanna, you know, block off a street, they have, they use the same permit as a block party, so, you know, it's difficult.
And to further better communication too, with the police department, they're gonna have access to City Works now, so they can view the permit, as well as all the supporting documentation, the organizer, as well as the time, the reason for the event, so they'll have access to that. And then also, we're going to add a portion to the COVID, COVID sheet, basically so that we'll get the police sign off, and then we'll also reach out to the alderman for the respective areas at this time.
Okay.
Or we can go a different route, if you so choose.
Thank you. Would there be anyone else? Alderman McDonald.
Thank you. Just a real quick question for Val Yazle. Can I get, or can we all get a, an updated report of, in particular for the downtown TIF, the amount of money that's in the fund, what is obligated for this in, you know, let's say, the next couple fiscal years, and then what, when and what is anticipated to come in with new real estate tax dollars? That's, that's one, and shaking your head, I appreciate that.
Yes.
And secondly, what's the status, we've talked about in this room a couple of times, what's the status of a bond issuance for the downtown TIF?
We've been in discussion, and I'll defer to the mayor and Corporation Counsel, because we just had a little bit of discussion about this today, about getting an RFP out to local banks, seeing what kind of loans they might offer us, since loans are, you know, at a good interest rate right now. But we've just had a discussion about that just earlier today, so I don't know if you'd like to elaborate more, Mayor, on that?
Yeah, the, so I brought that up with purchasing, because it used to be you'd just ask ten banks or whatever, what's your rate for a set amount of time, but with an RFP, you can negotiate possibly, so that's the reason they preferred going that direction. The other side of it is, it's, I think it's for seven and a half million dollars, because the projected payout of the TIF would be, I think it's over ten million dollars.
Yes.
So, that's where we came up with that, but I think the agreement, or the RFP is being reviewed, and will be finalized this week, and put out there for, I think, a week or ten days for responses, and then hopefully within a two-week, three-week period, it'd be brought before the EDC and the city council for consideration. Corporation Counsel, do you have anything else to add on that?
Just very briefly, it would be a normal RFP process, it'll probably end up, based on just the cost, it'd be cheaper to do a loan, and just a regular loan, than a bond issued, because the amounts are so small. And so, that's being analyzed, and I think that's OBM's recommendation, was to just do a normal borrowing, almost like we do when we buy cars, or something of that nature, you know, instead of issuing a bond. But we'll have all those details relatively shortly.
And I appreciate that, and I would, if they could also, just, just so I understand it better, just outline for, for me, if it were to be a bond issuance, you know, what the fees are that are involved, I'm sure, and then we can kind of compare everything, not only the banks, but, you know, what, what a typical bond issuance would be. And I don't doubt what you said at all, I just like to see it, because I don't really have a concept.
Absolutely, we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Val. This is your first time back, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I've been watching you all.
No, but I'm back in the town.
Actually, here, and I was running, because you guys were going fast enough. I'm watching it from my office, and then I saw, oh my gosh, it's almost here, when we were doing one of mine, so I kept running.
Well, it's good to see you.
I haven't run for a while, so, thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. And Val, actually, you might not wanna go completely away, I'm sorry. And I don't know if this question is better for you or for the mayor, but I've been getting questions on the business, the COVID business support opportunities, and when those will be available for businesses to start applying. Do we, I know we had sort of a brief update last, was it two weeks ago? I wasn't here last week. Do we have a timeline on that, and where we are?
Well, we're still working with Justine Peterson, and no, I don't personally have a timeline, but it's a little more intricate working this, because we're doing two things. We're doing the, the grants and the actual loans. So, I wish I could tell you, and I promise I'll tell you as quick as I know.
Thank you.
The one aspect, they are, they've signed up, I think, at least three banks, or possibly four, but they had a couple others they wanted to finalize, and then move forward with that, so it should be within a week or two. But I'm not sure of the HUD releasing of the funds, that seems a little murky still. So, that's one loose end we'll have to tie up to figure out. But we probably could move forward with CDBG funds and just use COVID as reimbursable.
Right.
So, if we were to do that, what kind of timeline are we looking at, Mayor?
Could, I would say anywhere from two to three weeks, be, you know, the best case scenario. Hopefully, we'll have it done by three weeks.
So, we're really looking at kind of mid to late August?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Don't wanna overpromise.
Right, no, I know, it's just, I know, I know there are quite a few businesses who are, they're getting nervous, you know.
Yes, I've, I've had an uptick in calls.
I'm sure you have.
For a while, it was kind of quiet, and then I've just recently, in this last week, week and a half, had an uptick in calls.
Yeah, I think, yeah, people.
That bears that out, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring it up again, I appreciate it, thank you.
No. Anybody else while I'm standing here?
While you're there. So, we keep saying HUD is holding this up, or HUD, do we have a reason why HUD is holding this up? That we can work with?
That would be, that's a great question. No, they're just the process we're had. I mean, they're, they actually have not still published all of the guidelines for the COVID money. I mean, it's still not completely done. And so, there's just a slow process of what they have to get things done. We're very, very close to being able to get release for our funds for the rental assistance. That's really close.
It just seems like.
I'll come dancing in here next week, if I've got that, how's that?
Yeah, I appreciate it, but it just seems like in other states, these things are moving along that faster than in Illinois, for some reason.
And a lot of, and I hear that all the time, and a lot of time, because. And a lot of, and I hear that all the time, and a lot of time, because believe me, I've been on the phone with HUD a lot. They, they know me now very well. And a lot of it is that people have gone out on a limb with their COVID money. So they're like, they're like taking their regular monies, their CDBG monies, banking against their COVID funds with fingers crossed. Because I literally talked to somebody about, eh, probably a week and a half ago, and she said, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're doing, everything's going to be okay for doing this. And she's probably right, probably will.
So we're just not taking that leap of faith, then, I guess?
Faith, or, I don't know if I'd call it a leap of faith, or taking that chance.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Alderman DeSenzel.
This isn't for you.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Okay.
We have, next week, I believe, our meeting is on Wednesday night, because Tuesday night was supposed to be National Night Out. Do we want to keep the meeting on Wednesday night or move it back to Tuesday, where it belongs?
Whatever the will of the council.
Are we allowed to do that this close to it?
Yeah.
I believe that the, I will check that, but I believe we actually set the meeting by ordinance when we set the council meetings at the beginning of the year. So if the, I think that could be problematic, since it's in the ordinance, absent a special meeting to amend it. That doesn't mean you couldn't declare a special meeting on Tuesday, have it, and then not hold the Wednesday meeting. But it can get very awkward, because recall, we, at the beginning of each year, we set the council meetings, not committee meetings, but we do set the council meetings.
See you Wednesday.
Yeah, see everyone Wednesday.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Conley is the new grandma.
Yay!
Grandma again. If anyone has an hour or four, I have pictures. Thank you. I actually, I had one more. Alderman Gregory, I just wanted to compliment you on your shirt, and I wondered if maybe you wanted to
It's nice.
Model for us.
War II constituent had won a contest. Biggie Smith, for War II resident.
That was a national contest, right?
A national contest, yes, yes, yes. She did a wonderful job, a very nice young lady. So the city has supported her well. I believe these shirts are selling out time after time after they reload them. And, and the good thing is, you know, 100% of the proceeds go to COVID relief and, and help, you know, throughout the country. So, you know, one of our very own has, has dug in to make an impact to help people.
Yeah, it's really exciting. I was thrilled to see you wearing that tonight.
Thank you, thank you. I should have got a small, but it's all right. I'm working. I should have got a small. But would there be anyone else? I just want to say a few things. I know we, and I guess this is a question for Corporation Counsel Zerk. I do know of a Black Lives Matter sign that was cited to be taken down for being too big. And I, I felt and I thought that campaign signs in residential yards were approximately this size at any point in time. So it was a little concerning. So I, you know, I definitely, you know, spoke with that constituent and, and, you know, told them we'd look into that. You know, it was, it was concerning. So, you know, that, that's that. And then the next one's really a statement. It's really not a question or anything. It's just really a statement. You know, we, we had a, there was an article that came out, you know, about some, some wording that, that one of our officers used on our arrest. All right. So I, I just want to say that, you know, we had one situation, we fired a guy, this situation, he's, he's not fired, or whatever the case may be. And I have had some conversations and, and, you know, I've gotten an explanation. And I can sort of understand it. But what we have to work on is, we have to work on, how do we get the public to understand these things? Because they don't understand when they see one, one situation versus another situation. How do we, how do we bridge that gap for, for, for the public to, to know that, you know, situations are being handled fairly and, you know, one's not getting the run in of it and, and so on and so forth. You know, and, and, you know, every time that these things come out, you know, it, it's always someone, regardless of, of us, whatever organization it is, there's always somebody else besides one of us, us council members that, that, you know, to my feeling, a little bit more information before any of us. And it bothers me. So, so all I'm saying is, I would like, Mayor, for us to start these conversations to improve this section of, of our, of our issue. We put in some nice things in our resolution and things, but I think it's time to start having these conversations, start time to put in some of these actions and things, so we can really move forward, so our community can feel like Springfield is the leader of this country and, and on the city side. And I believe we are. And, and we got to get moving on in. You know, we've done some things today. So I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, actually, I, as Corporate Counsel, you know, it'd be nice to have, once a disciplinary action takes place, or whatever that is, what can we release to the media? Because that's where the calls come from. So we should just be releasing that, and that'd take care of it.
Thank you.
Because otherwise, it is, you know, it's hard to compare one incident to another that seems similar. I think by, we need to codify it in some fashion. So he's looking into that and work with HR with regards to what can be released. And, you know, it's limited on what you can say. So, but you want to make sure that you kind of do a fair apples to apples with regards to those disciplinary actions and share what you can, but you can't cross the line as far as, since it is a personnel matter.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would there be any citizens that address the committee?
Yes, Chairman, we have Larry and Margaret Franklin.
Larry, and Ms. Margaret, if you would like to come up with me?
How you all tonight?
All right.
How you all tonight?
Good day.
There's a couple of things that we need, wanted to address with the council, is these block parties is getting out of hand. We had this problem last year with this same group. They had over 400 people at this block party, didn't they, until four o'clock in the morning? And we were told they would never get another permit. Well, lo and behold, Saturday night, we had the same problem. And I think the city needs to put a restriction on this stuff and stop it, because they get on that street. We live in an enclosed area where the railroad tracks is barricaded off. There's only one way in, one way out. And it's causing too much difficulty. If we had to have emergency personnel through there, they could never even get through there. We had over 200 people on Saturday night at this party. I called the police five occasions. They were driving through my front yard, and the police told me there was nothing I could do about it. They were spinning tires and tearing my yard. I said I wanted to make criminal damage report, and the sergeant looked at me and said, you can't make a report. It's my property. How come I cannot make a report? So I think these things need to be addressed. And on several occasions, we, we've lost our neighbor NPO officer. We've asked for a camera in this area, because this is an ongoing situation every day in this area.
I am Margaret Franklin. We live at 1233 North 14th.
Can you step over to the bike for, for the record, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry. We live at 1233 North 14th. And we've lived there for approximately four years. We are grandparents raising two teenage grandchildren. Okay? So Saturday night when this all began, it started at 2:00 in the afternoon. And I understand the lieutenant came out to survey what was going on, to see where it was going on at. And he did not even have knowledge of this until 3:00 in the afternoon. So when the lieutenant got out there the other night, I went to him and I said, Lieutenant, look, something's got to be done. If, like my husband said, if there would have been a house fire, God only knows what would have happened. If there would have been a medical emergency, God only knows again what's going to happen. I am not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, okay? But Springfield Police Department came out there, and as God is my witness, four officers stood there and looked at me in my eye and said, Margaret, do you see how many there is of us? I said, yes, sir. He said, there's four. I said, okay, would you mind finishing? He said, if you think I'm going to send us four officers into that beehive, you're crazy. I said, excuse me? He said, there's like 200 people between 14th Street and Reservoir from both ends. And there was no reason, no reason for it. I understand the officers don't want to go in there. I get that, they're human. But the party should have been nipped in the bud by 10:00 when we called the first time. I was told the permit was given till midnight. I don't know. I was also told this week that there was a typographical error on the permit. I don't know. I've been shuffled just several people this week. I have spoke to Ms. Turner. I spoke to Mr. Bottoms. I spoke to Commander Dodd. I, I don't know what the answer is here, folks, but something's got to happen. Because if there would have been, like I said, any kind of an emergency, we would have been up a creek without a paddle. My husband and I tried calling a tow truck, because we were going to have vehicles moved. Because I have a wheelchair ramp in front of my house. My husband is on an electric wheelchair. I'm on a scooter. There's a gentleman two doors down from us that's also got oxygen 24/7. All I'm asking, folks, is that we get some help here, okay? I don't know where the help's going to come from. I'm praying to God that you guys, that you're going to stop these block parties altogether. If it says block party, then I think it should be suspended, terminated, whatever word you want to use. Because the people that's getting them are not going by the guidelines. There were no masks. There were no social distance thing, of course, with 200 people. The smell of cannabis was enough to make me high standing on my porch. I don't even smoke. The alcohol was unreal. After all this was over with, we had to go out and clean up the mess. There is no reason for it, not any. Okay? So all I'm asking the city to do is to stop these altogether until people can learn to go by guidelines. How do we know how many people out there had that COVID? We don't. So they put our neighborhood into jeopardy. They put Kenny Williams officers in jeopardy. They put everybody into jeopardy. Folks, we can't do this anymore. We just can't. And I'm begging you as a concerned citizen, as a grandparent, as a parent, period, if you guys would just please stand behind us and get together with the police, get together with public works. I was told they are the ones who gave the permit. I don't know who signed it, but.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin, you said this occurred before on Reservoir, last year or?
Last year, yes. We had it at 4:00 in the morning. You ended up with about 19 officers that are out there breaking up 400 people.
So what we, I just asked Corporate Counsel, we could just ban the block parties on Reservoir, since it's a repeat incident. And we'll set parameters, you know, so we'll get with Director Bottom and make sure that not one's issued on Reservoir. I guess if there's a, the neighbors want to do something, you'd have to get like 90% of the neighbors signing on or something of that nature. But since it's a repeat offense, probably doesn't happen that often as far as your request. So we'll figure out a way around that where it be allowed at some point in time if the neighbors would desire to be, to have it done.
Yeah, because like I said, we're, we're not even notified, this block party. And the street signs were left down clear on Enterprise. So the road closed signs wasn't even left where, on our corner. So. And then we had a city squad car. I had kids that were out of town on it, doing with a different organization. And they told me my children had to walk home, because they blocked 14th Street off, because you couldn't get down 14th Street for all the cars parked there. I'm not going to let a 16-year-old and a 14-year-old walk home in my neighborhood, especially with all the shootings we've had over there. If you pay attention to the news, we've had five shootings within the last six months over there. So it's a bad neighborhood, and you can't get no help. I've contacted the police, or like I said, our NPO has retired. We have no NPO. So who do you go to?
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
You're welcome.
First and foremost, they're right, they're correct. Everything you said was accurate as far as the block party stuff. We made some changes on the communication, like Nate said, to try to make sure we're aware, because we weren't aware of it either. And with that, when we came where, we notified our lieutenants. And they went out there, they found out they had a permit. And we were kind of shocked about the permit, too, because of the social media postings. And we're like, there's no way a permit was given for this. So further investigation into that with Nate on Monday morning is that the permit holders lied about what the purpose was. The purpose was supposed to be a celebration of life. That's not what we had out there. So we had basically a pop-up block party that was advertised, and they got a permit to make it happen. So they manipulated the system. So with that said, we have taken steps to ensure that does not occur. And we'll make sure it doesn't occur again for you folks, so.
Thank you, Chief.
What can I do about, where your officer told me I couldn't file a criminal damage to my property, where the roots are in my yard where they were spinning tires?
You can see me and Officer Lee soon as we're done here, and we'll take care of it. And additionally, with that, you will, you do have a new NPO who's coming your way. She's being notified of her reassignment. So we have a process. Officer Tadner is one of five officers in the last five weeks that just up and suddenly retired. And so we have a 15-day window where we have to post that and go through our process. But you do have a new one coming.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else? Comment? Any, Mr. Clerk, is there any else, anyone else signed up to speak?
No, Chairman, that's it.
All righty. Is there any?
I still want to speak.
Was this gentleman signed up?
He was not, Chairman.
I will grant you three minutes, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
James Johnson, lifelong city resident, Ward 2, B300. I'm gonna take my masks down, because I want to make sure. There's so much going on. I'm gonna cut mine short, but I want to touch on a few things that were said. First of all, I'm gonna go for my notes, so I don't miss too much. Last, last week, thanks for the moments of silence due to Chuck on the late Congressman John Lewis. And his words, we can't give up. I've been wanting to give up. I got, I got tired. But his words just rejuvenated me. So I can't give up. I must get in the way. And I'm gonna keep doing that in this horseshoe. I have a moral obligation to say something. So I'll be the one for the Springfield area, standing in John Lewis and doing what he's asking. Now, there was a, there's a lot to be addressed. And I don't have time to hit it all today, and I'm not. But in the weeks and months to come, we will address them. First thing I'm gonna start with was, the young lady last week who spoke at the end, she brought up some good questions. She said a lot of good stuff. And, and they need to be answered, Mayor and Council. So even if I ain't here, I'm listening. I'm gonna see if we're gonna get some answers to those questions. So between the fire chief and this whole horseshoe, those need to be answered. Now, I'm gonna stop from my notes and try to touch base on some things that's been said already. DeSenzel.
Just address the chair, Mr. Johnson. Just address the chair. Address the chair. You gotta address me.
No, no, I'm just gonna piggyback on some questions that was
I understand.
I agree with you totally on the speeding. I agree with you totally on the road work and all that. And, and I'm sorry to tell you, it's just gonna get worse.
Oh, I know.
It's gonna get worse. And the speeding, Alderman, yeah, it's out of control. Now, put yourselves in pitch yourselves in the shoes of all my coworkers who stand out there on that road and have to deal with that. We all want to go home, too. I understand, Chief, that, you know, we have a shortage of officers and all, but just pigging back, it's very dangerous. And it's only going to get worse, sorry to say. Alderman Dowling, welcome to the site's Ward II. We've been, I've been around here for a long time telling you, telling all y'all, stuff needs to be changed. We need to be fixed, you know? And now it's just hitting your ward. Now it's an issue. You, too. Gregory and Doris, thanks for the resolution. You get a phone call about me, because some things need to be addressed, to be added or amended. I won't do that here. But thank you. But the first thing everybody needs to know about systematic racism. Everybody don't understand what that is. So that needs to be addressed from this horseshoe or this podium right here. I ain't going to have no problem doing it. If don't nobody else want to say it and do it, I'll be back. And I'll tell you what systematic racism really is. Now, the biggest issue that I started to come here with was these masks. And them making us wear them. And I don't know what the rule is from the state to the city to, you know, I understand. And let me make myself real clear. I'm going to follow the rules. I'm going to obey the law. I don't agree with these masks. Soon as I hit that door down there, your security said I had to put my eyes on. So I'm following the rules. But for anybody who knows anything about wearing masks and so on, like, what are these, can somebody explain to me what are these masks supposed to be doing? Who are they protecting?
I could explain it if you want.
Yeah, I'm sure. And I know what you're going to say. It's protecting you, you know? Or it's protecting, or I'm protecting others, or I'm protecting myself. These masks aren't protecting us. I don't know, I don't know where this come from. These little, if you know anything about micro and biology and your immune system and what we need, I'm not going to wear my mask everywhere. I just can't.
Time's up, Mr. Johnson. But I want you to finish, I want you to finish the statement.
And I'm going to respect my body, and I'm going to respect everybody else's. But we have to be real careful about making everybody wear masks, and it's going to eventually affect our immune systems if we don't take in what we need. And since Sean Gregory is cutting me short, I'm going to cut it, I'm going to respect him this time and cut it short.
You're going over.
But I just have a real issue with the, with the mask. And I don't really know what the rules are. You know, I go in grocery stores, and if somebody can explain, then that would help me out.
Your time's up.
Thank you, Sean. So your role though.
But, but look, 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 one second. So I understand. I'm not cutting you off because I don't want to hear what you have to say. I want to hear what you have to say. You know that. And I know how you are, and it's fine. You can, you can get it out. I get it. But we, we have a time limit for, for our people. But, but as far as the mask, it's the medical professionals that can tell you why. I don't particularly like, like wearing it neither. But I'm, it's sort of cool now. So I get it. Nobody wants to, you know, it's a disruption for what, what we've done for me for 36 years and you for 23, or however old you are. So I get it, man. And, and I get it. And nobody likes it. But, but we've got some medical professionals that can, that can, you know, help. And anybody else that, that wants to know why we do it. And, and our Fire Chief, he's very well versed in it. And he's done some things with our Public Health Department, Ms. Doris, Ms. Erin. And, you know, but I'm happy that you at least don't follow the rules.
Put it over your head now.
All right.
Alderman Conley, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm just, I'm going to be even briefer than that. And I will just say, what we're dealing with, with this virus is, is a, it's a droplet transmission-based viral spread. Actually, when you're wearing a mask, you are protecting yourself, you're protecting everyone you come around. The most graphic depiction of this is what happens when people go to the bathroom without pants on. Goes everywhere. But if you've got your pants on and you're using it in the right space, droplets get trapped. I mean, I don't know, that's probably more graphic than we need to be at this council. I'm sorry. I see you, Angela.
It makes sense, though.
But no, I, I think it would be negligent to allow, to allow that, that comment to stand. I, there are very sound, and as Alderman Gregory pointed out, there are very sound reasons why we wear masks. There are requirements for it. When you're in a grocery store, yes, you should be wearing a mask. When you're in a place of retail, you should be wearing your masks, because it is what we do to slow this transmission. I have had a very personal experience with an asymptomatic person who did not know that he was positive for COVID. Fortunately, this young man wears his mask all over the place. He washes his hands. He's very careful. And in a shared living and work environment, no one else came up positive. So that, this is a real thing in our community. We shouldn't be fighting this. We shouldn't be, we need to stop arguing about the efficacy of these masks. We've seen other countries where they just put the masks on. They wore them. They had personal issues maybe with it. But other countries did this. I just finished watching, I'm a Premier League soccer fan. My husband's British. We just finished watching the end of that season conclude. That is a high-contact sport. It's close proximity for the players. And unlike what we're seeing for some American activities, we didn't have players get infected. That, that season was able to finish. Because other countries just jumped on the masks. They put them on, and they, they stuck it out. We have to slow this transmission. I am tired of watching our numbers creep up. I'm tired of it. We've all seen this. We get these daily reports. Sangamon County, fortunately, is, is one of the better counties. But in terms of number of people tested and percentages of positives, those numbers are creeping up. And we need to do what we can. And yes, wearing a mask is a momentary annoyance. It's, they're not comfortable. I can't see in my glasses. But I, we all need to be doing it. And so I appreciate that you wore it today. I appreciate everyone pulling them up over their noses when they're wearing them, because it is a droplet transmission. You sneeze and droplets come out, too. And that's, I'm done being graphic. But thank you, Chair. I just, again, I do work for the Department of Public Health also. So I can't, I can't just let that sort of discussion where we're having, we're contending masks continue unquestioned. So, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Right.
Wait a second. Real quick to answer your question, James. When you should wear them is anytime you're out in public, you should. The reason, it should be at least within six feet of someone. But the other thing is, if you're walking in the grocery store or something like Alderman Conley said, you sneeze, and that is airborne. And so you're better off sneezing into the mask. And it's not going to prevent it totally, but it will prevent the spread significantly. And that's the whole purpose. And so that's why it is beneficial. We really do want everybody to wear it. Because if we don't, we're going to go back to Phase Three, and it's going to be very detrimental to our business community. People think restaurants have closed now, or some other businesses. We go back to Phase Three, and it's going to be, you know, disastrous. Because I've heard from a lot of business people, and that's what they're very, very concerned about. So if we talk about local all the time, we should mask up for locals. I mean, that's what it's all about. And staying strong in that regard. So we move forward in that direction. But I would encourage you to talk to the county as well. We, we heard a lot, because we are, I think we're overly transparent at times. We allow people to speak, and that's because it's the people's government. But you should have that same opportunity at the county or all levels of government and share your opinion.
Let me use the chair.
Yeah, this, this, it's all branded to them. No, they, they don't even go on their website, on the public website or anywhere. Yeah, for sure.